All right, it's five o'clock. If everyone will please stand. To begin our afternoon together, I'm going to ask Mr. Norris Frank, if he'll lead us in a word of prayer. And then following that, the same he's got one of our Westchester students going to lead our pledge via video.
Our very father would just think that opportunities to come together is as men and women, as we discuss the basis of our school. Dear my father, thank you for sending Jesus down from heaven to die on a cross for our sins. Jesus, thank you for standing on the cross. Dear my father, we pray for our country, we pray for our students, we pray for our teachers and ministry. And just be with us in this meeting tonight with everything that we do, we're all glorified, all we serve is the worship of Jesus.
All right, this time I'll ask Mr. Kildare, if he can please call the role.
Shane Connor?
Here.
Bean Cubbles?
Here.
Randy Chear?
Here.
Nathan Hudson?
Here.
Norris Frank?
Here.
Kim Scott?
Here.
All present. All right, we do have a core of present, so we will proceed to call our meeting to order for September here at Westchester Elementary. The first item we need to address tonight is a recommendation to accept the board agenda.
Make the motion to accept the board agenda.
Our motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion pertaining to the agenda? All right, if there is none, all those in favor of approval say aye. Any opposed? All right, it is approved. The next item, which we do each September, is for the coming year, is select our board chairman, vice chairman, and our legislative representative. And that is duty that begins by me turning this over to the vice chairman, so Ben, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
So at this time, the floor is open. Are there any nominations for board chair?
I'm going to make Shane Connor.
Norris Frank is nominated, Shane Connor, and any others? All those in favor of Shane Connor remaining board chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Shane, I now turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. We do have to also address the position of vice chairman, legislative representative, so I'll open the floor for nominations at this time for vice chairman.
I'm nominating Bean Cubbles.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a second? All right, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of Bean Cubbles being vice chairman, by acclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ben, you will continue to serve as vice chairman, thank you sir. Legislative representative is also a position that we have on our board to keep in contact with our representatives in Nashville. Becky currently serves in that role. Do we have a nomination for legislative representative for the upcoming year?
I'm nominating Kim Scott.
Second.
Well, there is a motion and a second. Is there any other nomination, or are there any other nominations? All right, if there are none, the vote is for by acclamation, naming Kim Scott our legislative representative. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all, and thank you to those who are serving. With that, we move into our consent agenda. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve that? If you have a chance to look over that in your packet.
I'm not sure if you approve consent.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. There is no discussion on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Delegations, we do not have any delegations that I'm aware of that have approached the board to appear tonight, so we'll move straight to our spotlights and celebrations, which of course, that's why we're here at Westchester Elementary School, so, Mr. Kildare, how do you give the same here?
Well, I want to first extend our gratitude for how well you presented and bringing out record number of staff to support your cause. It's just awesome to have the work being done here each and every year. As we know from the performances that have been measured as of late with state assessments, Westchester is doing some really good things. So we're proud of the work, proud of the work that continues and the growth that we're going to have to continue to model that lifelong learning. Right, very good.
All right, I'm going to start out with, we have students that do videos on, our enrichment teacher actually does them, but it's not just students that are in enrichment that do the videos. On Mondays and Fridays, they do a video presentation. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have students that come into my office and do it via intercom. So that's something they really, really enjoy doing. So this is one from last Friday, it's Lila Faulkner. And what I want you to kind of notice is they were highlighting our soar matrix every day. This is a show of self-control, owning a positive attitude, act responsibly, and respecting others. So we started our school year off highlighting those every single day and what that looks like, and we have a word of the week and things like that. So I'm going to let, I'll let you listen to Lila from Friday, September 12th, first of all.
Good morning, Westchester Eagles. My name is Lila Faulkner from Miss Hopper's third grade class. Today is Friday, September 12th, 2025. Waylon Y has a birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Waylon. Who knows our eagle expectations? See if you can stay in with me. Soar by showing self-control, own positive attitude, act responsibly, and respect others. Great job. Today we are focusing on respect. We are being respectful when we listen carefully, use polite words, and are gentle towards everyone we talk to. Try doing these things today. Let's review our word of the week. Mediocre. Mediocre means something that is just okay. Here's an example. If I don't try my best on an art project, it'll turn out mediocre instead of amazing. Here's our eagle challenge for today. Do what you're supposed to do without being asked. If you see trash, pick it up. When you finish your work, put it where it belongs. Remember, Eagles, soar high and don't stand apart, man. We will, we will pause for long silence. Please stay for a bunch of legions and raise your flag, HRX, land a little bit. Have a great Friday, everyone. Bye.
And there is a pledge of allegiance, I meant to pull up.
Hi, everyone.
We won't do it again. Okay, and then I want to go into just a really super quick presentation, just celebrating who we are. Our overarching thing for a few years now has been one team, one vision, one goal, and we've been working really hard toward that. Also, our second grade, we met both of our AMOs again this year. If you'll look at that reading number, seventy-two point forty-six percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. So our new AMO is even higher than that. So we've got here really, really high reaching, that's our second grade, we're very excited. Math, we had fifty-nine point four percent of our students that met or exceeded expectations, they also met their math AMO. So we have students that came in ready for third grade this year because our second grade did so well. And none of that happens if our kindergarten and first grade doesn't do their job also, so it's definitely a team effort around here. Third grade also met their reading AMO, which was sixty, sixty point twenty-nine percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. And I put these pictures of these three ladies in there here because, I'm trying to find them. I'm celebrating our third grade team because they've been short a teacher this whole school year. Well, we had a sub just a little bit, the sub didn't work out, which is understandable. And instead of these kids having rotating subs and somebody different every few days, these three ladies split Miss Atchies class up and have taken extra kids in their classroom for reading and for math. And that tells me that our culture is, these are our kids, these are all of our kids. And I'm celebrating them, and I asked them if it was okay to do this because I didn't want to embarrass them. But that's what it's all about, and that's what Westchester is all about, is what are we going to do to make sure our kids are successful. And the letters I send home to parents, Miss Atchies class, and students that are in their classes say just that. These ladies decided these are our kids, and we want to make sure they're all ready and they're for when Miss Atchies does get to come back, so, for all votes in the air. I also wanted to highlight for our third grade, again, we are a level five school again this year. Very exciting, our overall to five, our literacy and numeracy together to five, literacy was a five and numeracy's a three. Our goal is to have all fives again, have all fives this coming school year. That's a goal we set for ourselves again. Oops, I wanted to highlight too just a few other small things that have been going on. I did gun safety, and so Mr. Jerry Hurst is up there teaching, he did classes, every class had to hear about gun safety, and he had a lot of interesting questions. And everybody wanted to touch his safety, but he's been a real asset to us, and I appreciate that partnership that we have. Also, our STEM classes will talk about it a lot, the cool things that they do in there, they had somebody donate a whole, a lot of material. And there were people, there were kids that designed outfits and just all kinds of things that they, it was really cute what they did. And now we have reading bikes in our library, you guys saw the library last month, it was just redone, and now we've added the reading bikes, which they love those too. And then with our reward, our eagle soar matrix, last month, kids are in popsicles on the playground. For this month, they're working toward getting to play kickball game against the staff. So that's what they're working toward right now, we're going to have outside games, we're going to play kickball. And then there's just me being a mouse. I played library mouse for the kindergarten, first grade, they are little books, we put them in the library overnight, and they thought a mouse was leaving stories for them because it was really about them and books they would find in the library. So this was the day I revealed myself as a library mouse, so. That's it, I just wanted to kind of just tell you just a few things going on, but I'm very proud of the work we're doing here. We couldn't do it without our PTO. Because of our PTO, this cafeteria looks beautiful, got painted this summer, that was a partnership with our PTO. We couldn't do it without everybody working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. Any feedback, questions, comments for the board to move forward with?
I just wanted to congratulate everyone, not just the third grade, just like you said, thanks everybody. Westchester's a little special to me. You guys are awesome, and that's what makes Chishtaka County Schools unique.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the moment before we get into our actionable items, that we have any public comment? Steven's reading things on there, Nick, okay. We do not have anybody speaking to the agenda, so we'll move right to that first item, which is a recommendation to the board to authorize the 2025-2026 school district fundraisers. And I'll, just the background, turn it over to Mr. Kildare.
Well, as it reads in your agenda, each school year, we do this at this time of the year. The process has started first of the year for our teachers, coaches, school leaders, club sponsors, other staff members, PTO leaders that have submitted fundraiser requests. Those requests were submitted by August the 29th. Unlike what we've done in previous years, Stacy Keen and myself facilitated a meeting, virtual meeting, where everybody that had a fundraiser request to submit had to participate in either live version of that meeting, where Stacy went through, I went through the process for completing the fundraiser request on the Google form, but Stacy went through more of the fiscal responsibility of submitting receipts, the collection forms, the obligations regarding proper fiscal responsibility. After that meeting, well, and saying again, we recorded it because not everybody can attend that meeting at that time, but everybody that submitted a fundraiser request had to either participate in the meeting or watch the recording. And embedded in that recording evidence was the policies that we have in section two that really address the specifics around that fiscal responsibility. So I support that we have raised the bar of accountability of our staff and related folks to know what's expected of them to do this properly. And everybody that submitted a fundraiser request, again, has to go through the process of getting first the approval of their principal, and then after that, that comes to me for approval at the district level. What I've shared with you folks is the spreadsheet that includes the majority of the content that they had to complete. And also, because of using Google Forms as a way of identifying or submitting their fundraiser requests, we have a pie graph representation of where the fundraisers are coming from. As you can imagine, the overwhelming majority of them are through the high school because the high school has a lot more sporting teams, has more clubs, organizations related to CTE. And also, when you have homecoming activities and you have different classes that have fundraiser requests, whether it's t-shirt sales or other fundraiser-related activities to sponsor or to fund their decorations of the hallways of the high school, that's why there's more of them. And it gives you a breakdown of those ninety-three fundraisers that have been approved. But again, my request is that the board, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer, but I'm asking the board to authorize these approved fundraisers.
Questions or a motion to move this toward a vote?
I make a motion that we approve the fundraisers.
Okay, there is a motion that we approve this list for the school year? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Or again, as Mr. Kildare said, any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving this list, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now the list is approved.
Thank you.
The next recommendation is to a board policy that we have involving graduation requirements, and you have some rationale for this change from the high school, and I wish to feel to draw a little bit more clarity to that.
Well, and again, I tried to provide some narrative in your agenda, but from the last, since the last meeting, Coach Merly had asked, because the high school in the last two years has returned to in seven periods in a given school day that can be credit bearing. The years previous, we were on a trimester schedule where you had the opportunity of gaining multiple course credits per year. And at that time, we were at twenty-five credits required for graduation. But then after the trimester, we went back to a six-period day with a thirty-minute period at the end of the day for athletics or other sports groups, other clubs and organizations that can meet. And during that time, the transition from a trimester back to a six-period day, the board approved returning to what the state requires, which is twenty-two credits for graduation. Since that time, and we know for the last two years, around the Christmas break, we have several seniors that satisfy the majority of their graduation requirements. And some graduate at Christmas time, which for funding purposes, fortunately, the school benefits from that, even though they're not present, if they graduated at Christmas time, we still get to count them toward our average daily membership. But there's another population of students that are those exceptions that you, as a board, have to consider approving, are those who are meeting all their ready graduate requirements but still lacking a few credits. And those are the students that are either investing in work-based learning opportunities, taking some dual enrollment courses off-campus, whether that off-campus is at Jackson State, Freed Hardeman, TCATs. As Coach Merly has expressed, the ones who he's requesting this adjustment is the target is the students who need a little bit more motivation to stay in the course their senior year and to take advantage of the opportunities the state provides. Every senior, every junior, like Jace over there across the way, you have up to five credit-bearing courses at the college level that are paid for through the Tennessee Lottery. And after that, like for example with Freed Hardeman for one, and I know Jackson State is the same, you have the opportunity at a much lesser rate of pay than tuition costs for incoming freshmen at the college level, a much cheaper rate to continue your college education if you want to pursue it beyond five. Where we have had through the years, the last few years, some of our students, whether at Jackson State or Freed Hardeman, they complete their associate degree before they get their high school diploma. Same thing for the TCATs. We've had students complete a full certification program before they got their high school diploma. So both of those are exceptional opportunities that all of our kids have the opportunity to do. What Coach Merly is asking the board to consider by adding to the credit required for graduation, that students instead of looking for a shorter senior second semester, that they invest in more of those opportunities, whether it's work-based learning, which counts for credit also, and possibly builds a resume, or future dual enrollment or dual credit classes. So that was his justification that he provides there. And as you see from the reflection of the structure, it's what's in bold italics, that for this upcoming, well, for the current senior class, they will still be required to do the twenty-two credits. Again, that's the minimum requirement that the state requires. They have to do the right twenty-two. But twenty-two is required by the State Board of Education. But in addition to that, because there's seven periods of the day, that there, for the next junior class, they will have twenty-three, that will be like Jace's class, required to complete twenty-three. Sophomore class, twenty-four, and then reaching for the freshman in years following will be back at twenty-five.
Any questions about that?
Am I allowed to say something? I'm currently doing the associate's degree program for Freed. I started last year, did about four or five classes, and now I'm completely free to work in schedule. The only thing that I see with this is, as the credits is increasing over each year, it's not actually giving students any incentive to broaden the education through formality. It's a small portion of students that would go in for the adult enrollment path, the AP path, anything like that, but it's a small portion of small students that want to do it, that want to exceed their learning and will give up credits. For the students that are in the classroom that dreading their classes, they're now forced to do even more work when they could get their credits done and join the workforce early by doing that early semester graduation.
Thank you. How many credits you going to have on your graduate, just by chance?
I'm going to have sixty-one college credits and all of my high school credits.
And again, no shame to the Alexander plan, especially since you're family, but you are an exception to the rule, you know? Because most of our seniors, well, most of our students are not starting that pursuit until their junior year, at the earliest. Some of them, like in my case, and my own child, she started her senior year. So, you know, it's just encouraging those guys and girls, from what Coach Merly has shared, to stay the course, to finish the year because there's more opportunities, work-based learning, more opportunities, dual enrollment, that are not being tapped fully that the students have access to. So I think too, if they study, it may help them decide, you know, the future, if they're not going to be in your situation. If they're just trying to get through school, it may be a requirement to get credits, but at the same time, that may open up a door that they haven't thought of, and that may inspire them to follow up and join the workforce doing that. Especially if it's a, you know, one of the TCAT programs or something like that. Well, it's all electives too, but there's, past the twenty-two required. All twenty-two are not required courses that they have to pass, like the English, the math, the science, and social studies, personal finance. Those are required courses to take and receive credit before you get your diploma. This is just adding to the electives that the students get to choose, so it's not asking them to pick up something that they choose not. It's just pursuing further a program, studying that they may have interest in or higher activity.
So you said before we went to the trimester, we had twenty-five required.
No, when we were the trimester, we had it. When we had up to, some of the trimester classes were done in two trimesters of three, and we were able to accomplish several credits within a student's four-year span. That's why we went up to twenty-five. So during that trimester time period, we were at twenty-five. When we went back to six after that, it was six plus a thirty-minute window at the end of the day that did not necessarily represent a credit-bearing credit class. Then we went back down to twenty-two requirements as the state calls.
So six times four is twenty-four.
Correct, correct. I know. So they have, they have the, I mean, the freshman class is the one that's going to have, and the classes to follow, you have an opportunity, we don't have study hall anymore, so it's not an off, you know, you don't have the off-class where you don't have the chance to earn a credit. You have to take a credit-bearing You have to take a credit-bearing class every class period. So in four years, if you don't fail it, you're got twenty-eight credits automatically. So we're not, we're not pushing the envelope to where we're putting students' future graduation, on-time graduation in jeopardy. It's still giving some room for, for pursuit, because we want our students, if they have interest, to go through like a work-based learning. If they're involved in, whether it's a light maintenance and repair automotive, work at one of the dealerships, or work at one of the repair shops. It gives them a block of time. Also, with, you know, traveling to, if they want to go to Jackson State, which we have some that actually travel to Jackson State, well, that gives them time for the travel too, and still get credit.
Well, of course, I, I like school and I enjoyed, um, going to school. And I just hate for kids not to get the full, especially senior year experience. But I didn't have the option to finish at Christmas, or I might decide to do that.
I thought, I guess my concern is, when it goes up to twenty-five, and I'm talking about average, below average student that can't achieve those twenty-five credits, is that going to cause those kids to drop out of school?
I don't know if it would cause them. Now, it would be more challenging, resources and intervention will be provided. We're not just going to give them, uh, you know, a pink slip if they're not getting their stuff done. And again, we're getting ready for our first reporting period, you know, where grades go out in the next few weeks. And in our policy that we have just reminded our administration, we've sent it out to Parents Square also when the progress reports are going out, that it is the beauty of our educators. When they start to see students slip and start performing at an unacceptable level, that spurs the educators to reach out to the families and to begin to talk about, we need to work together to make sure that those students are accomplishing their, you know, meeting the grades, meeting the requirements for the class to get the credit. Again, when you think about three years' worth at seven periods where there's no study hall, you've got twenty-one credits, and for seniors who do dual enrollment. English Comp One at Freed Hardeman is a, or Jackson State, is a first semester class that counts for the entire year's credit to satisfy the, um, the senior-level English credit required for graduation. So that's why we have several seniors in that first semester that are able to accomplish the whole year, because we, as the State Board allows, that we have to accept those dual enro, dual enrollment classes earned as the substitute for the graduation requirement.
Is there any other?
Of all the students to excel and do great, but there's some that can't. I don't know, I just, I would hate to face the bar and see students quit, because maybe they don't think they'll take it. Am I looking at it wrong?
I don't know. Well, in three years, they'll have twenty-one credits, so in one year, they don't have to take it.
Well, and if they start feeling like they're freshmen here, I mean, we intervene, we offer summer school. Now, our graduation rate is better than ninety percent, so we're not, I mean, we are addressing the interventions necessary to see students succeed. And, and again, the whole goal is from junior high, getting them more career-minded at the junior high level, beginning them to expose them to CTE classes, the opportunity's going to be offered by the high school, uh, pursuits for a career that may be where, not like Jace, where he's pursuing an associate degree, but somebody who can complete some certification and at the end of their high school career, they're already pursuing a career option that they want to choose to do. And, uh, without college debt and got a job placement, almost immediately after graduation. That's happened.
There are some work-related classes that only count half-credit, is that not correct, Jace? And are they the entire year?
Uh, there is semester class.
They'll just be a semester, okay. So, one of those periods in that, in the semester, you're earning half-credit. And then in that same one to follow, you would receive, you can remember, without credit classes.
Like, you could take English One Comp and English Two Comp. That counts as two English credits in a given year. Same for math, same, again, there's, um, and this is a discussion across the state, because some schools, uh, only want to give us half-credit, only semester credit for a high, or for a college course, it's a half-credit. That's the way they're structured, but we are defending what the State Board of Rules and Rules says, that we have to, we shall, uh, assign a high school credit as a substitution for those dual enrollment classes. We substituted. English Comp One, you get a full English credit.
So is it going to be possible, you think, still to have some early graduates and do some?
Six.
Right. Well, that was his comment, sure. Do you know how many high school credits you have?
Now, he's, and again, you think that, start sophomore year.
Definitely. Well, that list is really long, each Christmas of the ones.
Did it?
It, it has been.
And I, it's a good thing. Have they had complaints? Um, has Clay had, like, a lot of complaints from parents of people leaving?
I don't know.
Is that where this is necessarily coming from, or we're wanting these students to take opportunities, uh, to take these other electives?
Well, it's a shared.
It's a credit until they graduate.
Now, I've had some complaints to me in the past with students who, my s, you know, asking why does their child not have to be at school before eight o'clock? Because they have a second semester in their senior year that is much more flexible. So I've had a couple of parents. Uh, I don't know, other than Clay provided me this narrative, because I asked him to provide a rationale and share with you. So that's script what he gave me.
So even if raises it to twenty-five credits, will students have early graduation?
Sure. Nothing's changing for this year anyway.
Yeah.
This is, this is talking, it's going to take three years before this twenty-five comes into effect.
Are there any additional discussion, or does someone want to get this in form of a motion? Or?
Do you know if there was a reason as to why he did the one-credit going up each year?
I asked him to do that. I asked that. Well, the reason why is they wanted to have a more immediate reflection of twenty-five. And I was initially asking him, are we looking at this for the incoming freshman only or the upcoming freshman? Which would be, gosh, I'm not even doing the math now, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, maybe? Is that the?
Twen, the freshman now will be the class of twenty-nine, twenty-nine, being current freshman.
So we would be talking about the class of twenty-nine, thirty, if you started with an eighth grade. He was wanting a more immediate impact with this. So that's the justification to do the increment of one per, just adding one more.
Well, I share Norris's concern, but also I know that we have so many great opportunities now at the high school classes, new options in the vocational departments, and, you know, three more credits is not a terrible amount, considering they have more, um, more, more periods now and more choices as well, so. What do you think, Norris?
I, I'm, I'm still, I'm still understanding what you're saying, and I, I mean, I don't know.
And, and I do realize what Troy says, and I do know that our teachers, when they realize that someone is kind of getting slow or needs catching up, if they, they do, they catch them up, so, uh, I'm a pro.
I think the burden too, maybe, could be way off. You have kids that need, that can't graduate before their senior years are over. We've got a lot of kids, but granted, some of them may not want to come to school. A lot of them want to come to school, knowing they don't have anything to do. And they disturb or interrupt, you know, the ones that need to be in class doing, you know, getting that credit. So this would help alleviate some of that, because it'd give them something, you know, they got to do something, they have to be present and actually in class to get that additional credit.
I would say there's plenty of room for our upper class to take more dual enrollment, dual credit. There's plenty of opportunities for work-based learning that has not been tapped. There's several opportunities for that. So I don't think we've exhausted those numbers. And, and I would say this, one of the measures of accountability that the high school has is that ready graduate. And that's one of the, actually, the, uh, the more successful pursuits that we have, because of what Brandon said, that we have so many opportunities for our underclassmen and upperclassmen to participate in. We have dual-credit classes. We, we get dual-credit for being, you know, because our teachers went through a training with Jackson State. So every student who has to take wellness will get a dual-credit. If they plan to go to Freed, or go to, uh, Jackson State after, not say they have to, but that dual-credit class earned will give them credit toward pursuit of their associate degree. I'm benefiting as a dad, because my daughter, youngest, has got a semester already done. So she entered her freshman year of college with the second sema, or the first semester already completed. And I know, like in Jace's case, he's going to be a lot further down the path there, and you've got a range of people between the two, whether they've got a semester ahead of them, already done, under, like I like to have it, under the watch care of mom and dad to make sure they're getting their schoolwork done, rather than starting it for the first time, living two hours, three hours or more away, and having to experience that rigor unlike what they've had before. So, anyway, that's my question.
I'll make a motion that we approve these changes to the policy.
Okay, so the recommendation, there is a motion to approve that, uh, policy four point six oh five for graduation requirements. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, it's made in second. Any further discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approving this, say aye. Are there any opposed? It is approved. Uh, next, uh, this last month, we received a letter, Mr. Kils, we received a letter uh, from Miss Emily Lund, who's our Southwest Regional Director of Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network. And she got a request of the board, and since, uh, she and Mr. Kils, I'll have you kind of talk about that request.
Well, and again, it was my understanding from my last correspondence with Miss Lund, that she would be here tonight. So I, and she knew the location, so she's not sitting in a, uh, another place, because we, we talked about where it's going to be in the time. So I'm sure that it was something interfering with her ability to be here. But again, this is something that she, as the leader or the regional director of this group of, for Tennessee Suicide Prevention, she had asked for our board to sign off on the proclamation. I've given you a copy of it in your agenda, but we've got a hard copy to sign, uh, which is the same content, but just signatures on the second page. And, um, I will share that with Miss Lund pending the decision to approve the signage or, or request to sign this proclamation. You know, again, suicide prevention, especially for our school-age students, is a serious, which I didn't realize, the, of the recognition of it being the, as it says there, second leading cause of death for, for students aged ten through fifteen, and third for those of age fifteen to twenty-four. Those are some significant numbers. And I know that we go well above and beyond the call to engage and to support our students through our educators, support staff, administrators, uh, school counselors, support staff with COO. Uh, we address those areas where students need that additional support. May be more than just the support for their academics, but for their livelihood, for their wellness, uh, to make sure that we are, uh, satisfying, hopefully, uh, the need for them to be a part of a group, part of our family. So I think that it's worthy cause that we should, should be able to support.
Just to make that official, I, I guess we could do, vote to, uh, recognize this month as Suicide Prevention Month and agree to sign this proclamation before it's missed one. So is there a motion that we make that recognition?
I'm not sure.
Say. Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of this proclamation, say aye. Opposed? All right, and after the meeting, if you each are just coming down, it's a hard copy, sir, by Mr. Kils or myself, and you can sign that before you leave. Uh, the final item for action tonight is another request to the board. It's a consideration of some additional property in Jacks Creek Elementary, uh, School Campus. Uh, with the background on that, uh, Mr. Kils, you've kind of shed some light on what this request is about and the action that can or have been taken if the board chooses.
And again, I, I gave credit to Mr. Norris Frank, because, uh, he's, uh, been, well, he drives by a lot more than the rest of us. Uh, and again, we have, you know, looking at the property where, you know, the new modular classrooms have been added when we had a, a, a swath of property with the Nichols, where we traded a, a, about an acre and a half for a half-acre so that we could have a drive-around and plenty of room for the modular classrooms. But if you're driving on one hundred, right there at the twenty-two A crossing, you know that there is a lot of, uh, underbrush and trees. Uh, part of the in-kind trade, I say the trade, because we didn't, there was no money exchange for the property change. But, uh, Mr. Carl Nichols agreed to cut some of that brush down, trees down, and he did. He fulfilled his obligation. But for us to be able to have a property that looks presentable as you drive on one hundred, as you come out on twenty-two A, rather than we having the opportunity, which I think Carl would allow us to, to, uh, uh, attempt to clean that property somewhat to make it more presentable, uh, he's also agreed to just sell it to us. Now, with that being shared, uh, I think the liability of cleaning up somebody's property could cause more problems than benefit. Uh, but again, uh, Mr. Norris has, uh, he's had more conversations with them. I went to Beverly Morton's office, sat down with Sharon Stovall, and looking at that roughly. That, what I've got there shown on the map from the, uh, Beverly's office kind of gives a, somewhat a, it's not to scale, but it's pretty close of what that acre would look like. And you can see, uh, based on the property lines, especially when you get down to the actual picture of the map, the aerial map, you can see the extent of what we would have, what we would potentially own. So it's, it's, and again, as Norris has said, and I'm, I can't, I don't want to speak for him, and he can speak for himself, but we just wanted to bring it before the board. This is not a have-to. We're not going to build anything on that. It's just a matter of providing a little bit better, uh, just to beautify the property right there at the sustenance.
Would, uh, I guess the eastern boundary line in the yellow highlighted area, how far, does that go to about the place of the new module buildings? Would, I guess the eastern boundary line in the yellow highlighted area, how far, does that go to about the place of the new modular buildings?
The way it lays out, or like, and I don't know what page number it is, being, well, the second page. Yes, I would say, because that aerial shot should be reflective of our, our current modular. So I would, I would say seven.
Do, that's, that's pretty rough property.
It is.
Do we know how much it could cost to get it or we can maintain it? Because we might, we might want to check into before purchasing it, see how much it's going to cost to pay somebody to get it or we can maintain it, right? Because if we're not going to maintain it, we're not going to buy it.
That's right.
So.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Carl has bushhogs, Carl.
I know, just from my line of work, those poles in that front area there, that is really, really wet, swampy area. So, you know, I think there's going to have to be some work done in order to get it where you can, like, keep it low, near ready. Depending on what the cost of that. I don't think it would be a great deal, but I think it is going to require some additional money for the size of purchase. And I might want to check into that cost before we make the final decision.
Do you have a comment? Would you more want to move this action to another point in time to that research for the?
Is it time sensitive? Like, or like you want to sell it to someone else?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
And we can say, we don't have to take action tonight, we can just defer this to either of Doris and she's had conversations.
Well, I want to make a comment. I don't know what you're commenting about, but it's wet. There's no part of it's wet, absolutely.
Well, it's been really dry this year.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not swampy or anything like that.
Well, it's not this year, but I know for a fact it has been, you know, what I would call a normal year, it's been extremely dry this year. And it does drain better now that it's been cleared off some too. But I know that we have had to give trucks down in that area and just absolutely buried them and had to wrench them out. I don't think there's a drain issue, but I, I do think that it's rugged enough in the areas there that you're going to have to get somebody in there with some nose or equipment and really get it where you can maintain. Otherwise, it would be right back in the same shape it's in. If he bushhogs some of it, he could have bushhogged all of it. I'm assuming he didn't bushhog all of it because he did.
Well, no, it would just find its kingdom.
I got to.
I would say more of it could be bush hogged, I would say. And because it's grown up, it's hard to see how steep the hill returning is going up to the school to know if we could be bush, if most of it could be bush hogged, I would say. It's just hard to tell.
Before Latasha passed away, she and I walked on that property when we were talking about trying to find where the property lines were. This was after she already retired. So it's been like a year or two before her passing. And she shared with me down there closer to where twenty-two A crosses with one hundred, that there used to be a little baseball field down there. So on the low end, closer to where the highways, um, um connect, there used to be a playground or a field, play field.
Well, I know from experience because we bush hogged lots of ditch mites and uh field ditches and things. It would be grown up already where you can't see it if somebody had not been bush hogging it in the last four years. So they're either weeding it, they're, they're, I mean, they're doing something with it or it would already be grown up to the point we couldn't see the school.
Well, thankfully they cut the timber off, they went in there, cleared a lot of it, you know, initially. And then it's grown up since then, so I don't think it would take a whole lot of, of effort to make it where we can maintain it. But I think it's, before we just jump in and back, we might want to check into that.
There wasn't any timber. He cuts trees for us, but we wouldn't.
I don't remember.
Yeah, he, it was, he didn't have somebody come in, he did the work himself as an end time trade off for that acre.
Yeah, I cut two of them, that's it.
Yeah.
I, I did this one at my aunt's that we did have a capital project search of this type of work.
I don't mind reaching out to whomever, like maybe Shane Horrible, somebody along that line who's already done some work for us on the practice field, football field.
Well, ultimately, we would, if we're going to bush hog it, Bo would be the one to bush hog it. So at least get Bo to go out there and look at it and see if he thinks he could bush hog it.
Well, and Bo's been involved in the conversation, I see.
It would definitely be better to look at when you make that turn.
And it is a minimal investment for its land, but, you know, they don't make any more damage.
Yeah.
So that's not a bad thing to have, regardless of the investment we're talking about. But it is, uh, does he guys tell me is that the board's desire to move this to another point in time? Or does anybody want to take action on this before we go?
I'm writing a motion that we purchase the land.
Okay. Motion's been made and done. And the price, just for the record of this land, is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
So that is the price.
Yes.
Uh, the motion has been made. Is there a second?
How second?
Any further discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, motion's made and seconded to make this additional property purchase at Jack's Creek Elementary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we can move forward with that purchase and then the work on clearing that up. All right, uh that's the end of the uh actionable items. We do allow portion of it to close our meeting. For Mr. Kilsner to address any updates that he might want to address. And then the board, if you have any questions, you can feel free to raise those at this time as well.
Well, and I would just go through, I know you've had a chance to review uh the updates that Stephanie Lawler has provided from her food service update, uh and Bo Bates. Also, the maintenance side gives me an update. Between those two, does anybody have a question or a comment to raise? Okay, then regarding the capital projects, um, uh, talking first about the Haggen Auto Facility. Again, as the, the agenda shares that we had our final walkthrough on the end, near the end of August, there was another meeting that took place last Monday. And in that meeting, it was to review the unsatisfactory coverage of the ceiling on the concrete in the shop spaces and also in the classrooms, uh the ceiling was not done, uh at acceptable level. After that meeting took place, Bo shared with me that the guy who actually was the subcontractor responsible for that went back himself and resealed it that same day. And then Bo followed behind him and he said, I was able to witness that the floors were definitely done more effectively. Now, it's still got some, I mean, it's not the, it's a spray type of ceiling, which, uh, it, it does not have the witness that you may see with some that may be rolled on or something more with a thicker consistency. But Bo, uh, did witness to say that it was done. Also, this past Friday, while I was meeting with Shane, we, we had approval of the Innovative School Model Grant. This was a four-year grant that we started several years ago. This is the final year of it. And of the resources that we have, it's going to give us the ability to put in some very important, new pieces of equipment, such as paint booth, uh tools that are going to be needed on the ag, on the automotive side. But we're going to spend several dollars at the, uh, at that facility uh with the hardware and other equipment needed for the shop space and the classroom space, as well as doing some improvement at our junior high, since there are STEM labs that are occurring and a CTE mindset now that is coming back down to the junior high. We've got roughly one million forty thousand to spend and, uh, since the, it was included with your consent agenda, we will have a meeting with those parties involved with those requisitions. And we're going to move as quick as we can with the purchases that are, uh, allowable by, by that grant. But it should give us a, a solid setting for that space, that Haggen Auto space to be ready for classes. Right now, the tentative window is fall breaking. Hopefully, I won't be just a constant telling you that we're going to push that later, push that later. But, uh, nothing stops, since the ceiling has been redone, the installation of the, the, uh, the floor hoist, the floor, um, lifts, that can be installed. And we have, not only, we have those, but we also paid for the installation of those. So nothing stops those from being done and transitioning those agricultural classrooms into the new shop and classroom space. Nothing stops them from that. There's already tables and chairs for the students to sit. Um, so, um, but we still have, uh, uh, still yet to be completed internet connectivity. The wireless connection is still yet to be established, should be this week. And mag locks put on the doors to provide security for the, for the location will be within the next few weeks. So intercom system, bell schedule, bell system, those will all be coinciding with the, uh, wireless connectivity. But all that's being processed right now. The multipurpose has been used by multiple groups, not only football team, but I've talked to cheerleaders that have used it. I know track has been using it or cross country's been using it. So, um, several groups, uh, we'll, we will have some type of meeting in one of those facilities probably after the season when we can, um, bring the freshness back to the smell.
They got the, uh, lockers installed?
Yes, they did. Lockers were installed, uh, I think in the, yeah, during the week of, they were completed on the, uh, before the twelfth. I think the twelfth is that Friday, they were completed, I think, on the eleventh. Close to a hundred lockers installed in the, the field house. But yeah, that was done then. So it looks really nice. Uh, it's going to be, uh, something worth, uh, worth cher- cherishing and taking care of for many, many years to come. And then also the practice field, as I said, Shane Horrible set that practice field or at least did the dirt work. If you recognize the, the piles of dirt that were moved out of the, where the multipurpose went, that dirt was utilized for the, uh, new field. And it was sodded, uh, a few, I guess it's been a month or so ago. And, uh, there's, it's also irrigated, so there's no, there's no, even though we're going through, well, other than today, going through drought situations, but nothing stopped them from being able to keep it watered and setting up. I don't think, talking to Coach Merly on Monday, yesterday, I don't believe that they have practiced on it yet just so they don't tear up the turf, but it's in good shape and, and, uh, will be utilized definitely in the spring.
Troy, I've got one question to go back to the Haggen Auto. Is Bo satisfied with what they sprayed on the floor?
Yes, he said to me.
He satisfied?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and again, this was under warranty, so this is not something that we had to pay another change order to get this done. It was part of the, uh, well, as we raised it, it was done on the satisfactory, uh, before. And like I said, the subcontractor came back right after that meeting that morning and followed up and did it the rest of that day. I don't know how long it took him to go back over it, but Bo was satisfied after he got finished that it was done much better.
Anything else, uh, questions? Anything else needs to come before the board? If not, I'll share just a reminder, please sign the proclamation before you leave. Uh, I've got a pen down here with this proclamation at the end of the table. Our next meeting will be in October on the twenty-first at East Chesapeake Elementary. That will begin at five P M. With that being the close of our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.